My good. We'd like to run through the joint meeting with the Airport Board. It's Tuesday, August 21st at 12:10 PM. We are convened in the City Center Conference Room, 351 West Center in Provo, Utah. We will call this meeting over and remind you that this meeting is being broadcast on YouTube, Provo City Council, where it'll also be available for on-demand viewing. Please be aware that the microphones in the room pick up noise, papers, and other rustling objects. Further be aware that microphones can pick up side conversation. We will begin with a roll call, and here goes by you, Bill. It's Kay. Do you want to start us?
Kay Van Buren.
Bill Braskin.
George Handley.
Keith R. Joe.
Dave Nair.
Mario Marquitas.
Dave Sewell.
Elizabeth Vanderwinkle.
Gary Winterton.
David Harding.
Steve Gleason.
Trent Johnson.
Donovan Sheff.
George Stewart.
Man Fusti.
Christopher Whitehead.
Thank you very much. We'll begin. Oh, go in the back here. Hey, Decker. Brian Ferguson. There. We'll begin with an opening prayer. Diane, is it off? Yep, say that for us. Thank you.
Our Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this beautiful day that Thou has given to us and for this opportunity to meet as friends and as Joint Counsel and Airport Board. We are thankful for the blessings of working and associating together here in Provo. We pray that Thou would bless us today that we may discuss those things important to Provo and specifically the airport and those things that would help the airport to thrive and to grow and continue to be an asset to the city. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
This is one of the fun things that I get to do on the council. I love going to the Airport Board meetings and seeing all the things that are happening down there. It's an amazing place, and it's just getting better and better. Thank you for all you do, making what it is and what it's becoming. It's just, it's one of my most favorite things to do on the council. We'll begin with the presentation, and we're going to turn the time over to Steve and let him take off. I'm going to go first.
We are having a slight technical difficulty.
We don't have a presentation. Do you have a presentation?
He does.
We don't have a capability to...
No way to put it up there? I've never been here once when this has all worked smoothly.
Maybe it's you.
It's me, I know. I accept the full responsibility.
As we talked, he's got some pictures that are showing what's happening down there. It is phenomenal to see all the plans that are work. How close are you on your master plan?
We're going to be a little bit longer. We're going to be three, four more months. We still have to do the public input before we finalize anything, so that's going to be the next phase.
But we look and see what's going on and all the plans. I love to see that, that it's, I hope we can get this thing going. What do you think, Brad?
Well, we call it out, see if they come up. I don't know.
I heard him say yesterday, he was so proud of his work when he came in.
I'm just curious. I noticed some other people in the room. I just wonder if, are they associated with the Airport Board or just interested citizens?
Introduce yourselves. Help us here.
Steve, if you can come up here and we'll run it from this.
Do you need the thumb drive?
No, I know it's on our network drive, so I can...
Sorry, I interrupted, though. You guys, go ahead.
I'm John Jensen. Interesting party. Tyler Layton, and working with John. We're looking at properties and trying to help with the whole process.
I do. It'll take forever to set up a fine margin under top level. I just need to run his checklist.
Elizabeth, it's called...
We'll see who gets there first.
Council update.
Is it on the screen?
What's that?
It's on. Oh. Bryce, it's in the minutes for this meeting.
You going to switch it now?
None of which was a quick... Can I just use the...
No, we're going to set you up now.
We lost everything now.
It shouldn't be that weird.
I'm very close friends with McKay.
Bryce, open that door.
It's working.
There you go. It worked. Okay, so, this is a pretty informal presentation, so it's mainly just pictures of what we're doing. A lot of you know about this already. That's the entryway to the Provo Airport now. It looks a lot better than it did a year and a half ago. We're still trying to get rid of some of the weeds in the front, but it is looking better. So, what we're going to talk about? Maybe.
Come on, man.
I think it's on dual screens. You have to move to the mouse isn't right.
Does this happen to everybody? Because I've never been here when this has worked.
Okay, try now. It should work now.
They always say, yeah, it's not working.
Push the button.
Yeah, I'm pushing buttons. Pushing every button. I'm probably messing everything up.
There's some button that like syncs it with...
Play button?
Yeah, who clicked it before and made it work? Just manually do it. Can you just manually do it? We haven't got a lot of time.
That's right.
Can you click it? Could be a short... Okay, so these are the projects in progress. If...hey, there we go. First one we'll talk about is the UVU and Airport Parking Lot, and we're going to talk about the corporate taxi lane. Then we're going to talk about the Taxi Way South Rehab, which is this part of Taxi Way Alpha, which is our primary parallel taxiway. Thanks, Bill Prohaska, for the picture. Then our electrical system upgrade, that went by itself, so did that one, North Ramp, and Duncan Aviation, which is down in this area of the airport. And then we'll talk about our master plan update, our 2018 master plan. So, first of all, the UVU Airport Parking Lot, this is the design that we came up with. This also shows you another thing we'll talk about, which is the corporate taxi lane going this way. I think we've discussed this kind of to depth, how we're doing this, but if anybody has questions, we can answer them. Currently, UVU is constructing this parking lot, and we have completed this roadway. We'll get some better pictures of that. So, this is the UVU Parking Lot section. I don't know whether you can see it very well, but we've got the light poles in there. They've got it all curved. It will add new stalls, and it'll be paved Friday, so that project is nearing completion. The Airport Access Road, you can see here, this is the road we built to allow the corporate hangers to get to their hangers, and also that will be the entrance into this new UVU Parking Lot. UVU is spending $800,000 building this parking lot, and it's a shared public-private, well, public-public partnership, where UVU is going to have access to all of the center parking stalls, and then corporate users will have access to the outer parking stalls. So, that will eliminate some of our parking problems. So, the Airport Access Road here was a city-funded project. Come on. So, there were some significant infrastructure upgrades that we went through here that probably Brian is more qualified to talk about than I am, if anybody has questions or if you want to cover that quickly.
Just sewer-water connections to potential hangers. We didn't want to dig up a brand-new parking lot, so water, sewer, power, communication, it's all in place for the hangers to be built.
The corporate taxi lane project. Again, this is a public-private partnership with Tac Air and Clyde Companies. So, Tac Air has already completed the first half of the taxi lane, the corporate taxi lane right there, and they've already completed their building, their new hangar that's on that. How many square feet is that hangar, Chris?
Twenty-five thousand square feet.
Twenty-five thousand square feet. Then this is the second half that Clyde Company is working on right now, so they've got that smoothed out. All of this eliminated the parking lot for UVU, which precipitated UVU building the new parking lot, so this all goes together. So, we're planning to repay Clyde Companies and Tac Air over the course of 10 years with impact fees from new corporate hangers on that taxi lane, which is a new thing.
Can you just clarify, those are not impact fees?
Yes, oh, sorry. These are like...
They think of impact fees.
This is a new thing at the airport. This is simply an impact fee to repay the cost of the taxiway. So, we just took the cost of the taxiway, divided it by the number of hangers, and then we're going to charge a linear foot. Everybody's up to speed on that.
Is it a one-time charge to the...
Yes.
To the owner?
To reserve a pad, you'll pay $2,000 per linear foot on the taxiway, and then that will get you your spot.
And that's how...
And that's how we're going to repay Clyde Companies and Tac Air for building this. And it was a pretty good deal for us because we have 10 years to pay it back, and it's basically a no-interest loan for 10 years. Chris is particularly excited about that portion of it. So, Taxi Way Alpha South, we had some airport geometry problems on the airport, and that just means we had a really sharp turn to a strange angle. So, part of this Alpha South rehab was we squared that off and made it a 90, and that portion is now complete at the approach end of 3-1. We strengthened it to accommodate the Airbus 320, which is our most common commercial aircraft right now. So, all of this was built a long time ago. This hasn't been rehabbed for years, so it was being stressed pretty heavily by the heavy aircraft, so it's now upgraded and accommodated. This is the rest of that Taxi Way Alpha South portion that is also complete. So, we restriped it, and we had to change our striping to a commercial standard. I don't have a good picture to show you this, but on our ramp, we basically lost 25% of our ramp space to this corporate, or to this commercial striping standard. So, right now, we're scrambling for ramp space, but we'll cover that in a minute. So, the center of that same taxiway, so if we continue this direction, that's the part that I already showed you that is complete. Now, we're into the center area, and this is the very complicated portion of the project. So, right now, we've lost Runway 1-8, we've lost Taxi Way Alpha, we've lost 25% of our ramp space, plus now we have nowhere on the center to turn around. That's important because for the next 30 days, if Salt Lake diverts 14 aircraft to us, as they have in the past, we're going to be really scrambling to find places for them to be, and we may not be able to accept them. So, let's just hope that Salt Lake has good weather for the next 30 days or so. We do have a contingency plan, just so you know. Chris and I have talked about what we can do to make sure we can still get them in.
Is diversion weather-related?
Yes. Yeah, always weather-related. So, again, this will be strengthened. What was it, two years ago? The taxiway actually failed, so we had Allegiant driving on it. We looked out there, and we noticed that it was waving like it was liquid, and then there was a hole. So, the city actually patched that up, and now we're rebuilding it all so that it will be in that Airbus train. The electrical upgrades, so when we built the tower back in 2005, this building didn't exist, and this building certainly didn't exist. This building is now where all of our weather information and FAA equipment, which used to be housed in my office, is now housed right by the tower. And the electrical vault that we're currently using, which is right next to the current terminal building, is now being relocated into this building so that we can change out all of our circuits. I won't bore you with the details, but just know that that's pretty important. One of the most important things we're getting is tower-controlled lighting, which we don't have now, so that when the tower is operational and it gets dark or there's a storm, they can click the lighting up to a higher intensity, which currently, they have to call us, we have to go to the vault and turn it on. It'll also give us pilot-controlled lighting, so that when the tower is closed, pilots can just use the frequency, click the button, and it'll turn the lights on, or turn up the intensity if they need it. One more thing on the lighting and the LED bulbs, which we're switching all of our lights out to LED bulbs as we replace them. Currently, the way the airport is set up, our lights are on pretty much all the time, and all our lights are on all night long. That is extremely expensive from an energy standpoint. When we switch to this system, we'll be able to turn off the lights that are not used very frequently and turn down the intensity of the other lights. That plus the LED bulbs will give us a huge energy savings, and other airports have seen as much as a 50% reduction in their lighting just by switching some of their light bulbs to LED. Okay, the North Ramp. We just put in 10 acres of concrete that we did the walkthrough yesterday, so it's a lot of concrete.
How many yards, Dee?
I don't know. What is the yardage?
Thirty-six thousand.
I've got 36 and 38. I'm going with Bill because it's a higher number. Thirty-eight thousand yards of concrete. We're not moving. Okay, so, one thing is, this is $7 million worth of concrete. Later on, we'll talk about the fact that we have an FAA grant to build a terminal ramp coming up in 2020 for $8 million worth of concrete. So, we should be able to get at least 10 acres of concrete. So, if you can picture this ramp at the other end of the airport, that's what we're looking to build at the other side. And no, we're not really excited to plow it. We were out there walking it, and it's a lot. So, we have two new asphalt connections to all that concrete so that Duncan or anyone else that needs that ramp space can get in there. That part is complete, so it's all lighted. We've just got the lights covered so that nobody makes a wrong turn. But the ramp and the taxiway portion of it are complete. All right, so, the big one. Am I right on that?
Two eighty.
Two eighty. I'm way low. All right, sorry. This was an old number. 220,000, 280,000 square feet of hangar space that Duncan is building. Here's the inside of one of their hangers as they're working on it, so hopefully you can get a little bit of idea of the scale of these hangers. So, they'll employ up to 500 people in this first phase. They also have two paint hangers that are being built. What's the size of the painting?
Fifty-six thousand square feet.
Total.
Total.
So, 56,000 square feet of hangar space for the paint hangers.
And that's part of that, too. Two eighties total.
That's included in everything, right. So, they'll also have two maintenance hangers, which we kind of already showed you, but here's a little better picture of how they're progressing. They're moving very quickly on what I like to call the easy part, and then when they get on the interior, I guess it'll be a little slower. Still on target?
We're actually ahead.
You're ahead?
At a schedule.
I walked it yesterday, and I am surprised.
You may not repeat that to our chair.
I will not. I will not say we're, of course it is publicized.
You're able to get construction workers? We are. The steel erection, I came down and visited with the city at the time, but we put out, that's the issue, where we had the key issue. We put out 11 bids, we got one back. In the bid we got back, they got... And the bid we got back, they got, "You're not going to like my number." So, our steel erectors are in Colorado Springs, but every other trade is local.
So, then they'll have office space in between. We clicked through that pretty quickly. But, Phil's here. So, our master plan, so scenario layout plan, this is from our 2020 airport layout plan. We don't have the total airport layout plan yet because we haven't gone through everything that we have to to get it. So, we're still operating off of this one. So, this is the corporate taxi lane that we're building right now. The main thing that's going to change, I believe, in the new update is this T-hanger, these T-hanger rows at this end. The market has just shifted, and while T-hangers are still in demand at our airport, box hangars and corporate hangars are more in demand. So, we've got a terminal area layout plan that is already being designed. So, here's one example of a terminal area layout plan. That's down at the north end of the airport. There's a few design options, if I can get them to click over.
South end, right?
South end, sorry. So, this is another concept. And then, so, this is what our master plan people are working on right now.
Question, I'm sorry, T-hanger, box hangar?
Oh, sorry. So, a T-hanger tends to be one really big building with little Ts built in it for the wings, and then the tail sticks in, and you can nest another set of T-hangers behind it that overlap, and it's basically for a smaller aircraft. So, it's your GA aircraft. They don't have a lot of amenities, very rarely have bathrooms, heaters, anything like that. None of ours do. There's power, and that's about it. So, small. The box hangar is a standalone that the individual own outright, the building, lease the ground from us, and then they can put their aircraft in there, and it's theirs. It usually has electrical, heating, sewer, water, power, everything.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, part of what the master plan is going to do is try and look at what our future needs might be and accommodate the shifting marketplace. So, this is a picture I just took today to sort of illustrate what I'm talking about, the shifting marketplace. With the ramp space at a premium, yes?
Just before you go too much further, so upon all of those options, I saw terminals with four gates with the idea that it could expand to 10 gates.
Correct. And in some of the options, there's the option to bend out this direction with additional gates. So, everything is built with the idea of expansion. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I took this picture today to talk about the shifting market and the ramp space. So, we never would park a jet here if we had sufficient ramp space. But, you can see that this is more of a corporate, what our market is going to, and right here, we've got the T-hanger row, and they're just starting to impede on each other because we don't have enough space for the corporate traffic that is coming in right now.
Can you, maybe you're going to talk about this, but so corporate is the trend? Is that what you're saying?
At our airport, that seems to be the trend. We have more demand right now for corporate and jets and larger aircraft than we have for T-hangers and GA. We have a demand for that as well, and we want to accommodate that. But, we have to, we have limited space, so we have to go where the market is going. Which, at the time in 20, in 2000, when we did the other master plan, T-hangers were the thing. They were in high demand. And they still are at airports like Spanish Fork, some of those airports, but our airport being towered, commercial, TSA, federalized, we're moving more toward a corporate market.
I'm sorry, I'm ignorant about this.
That's okay.
T-hanger and GA is private, not corporate?
Yes.
So, it's just individuals owning a plane?
Individuals who own a plane, they like to fly for fun, or maybe they fly for business, but it's smaller aircraft. That's the way that-
But, corporate is not, is corporate including commercial?
When I separate it, no. And this is a distinction that is purely mine, so don't feel bad that you don't understand it because I made it up. When I talk about small GA, I talk about private ownership of small aircraft, single-engine piston-driven aircraft. When I talk corporate, I'm talking jets, larger hangars, people who are using these for their business, but also some of them just for private use. But, I'm defining all of those as corporate. Then, when I move into commercial, that is for hire. That is, you pay, you buy a ticket, you get on a plane. Very different setup. So, that's my definition. Technically, corporate is also GA, but I make that distinction because I have to make that distinction.
But, you're saying, are you saying that the, I mean, sorry, I'm probably jumping ahead, but is the corporate more, is that driving more need right now than the commercial?
I'd say it's even. But, the commercial right now is, it's driving a lot of need. But, the reason that I say it's even, that's why we built the taxiway, or the new taxi lane for corporate hangars. We didn't have space for them, and there's a need for that. It's why we're trying to build a new terminal, because our terminal is completely full, and we can't accommodate any additional service right now, even though there are areas and airlines that would like to try it in Provo. But, we can't because we only have one gate. We can't overlap aircraft. Makes sense?
Question?
Yes.
How far north do you give corporate customers? Lehigh? Does it grow?
Well, Chris could probably tell you this more. As far as people who own hangars here, it's all of Utah County, what we would call our catchment area. They come from all of Utah County. We also get some from Heber, down into the Spanish Fork, Nephi area, anybody who has a jet. We're the airport they're coming to.
So, if you're a company in Lehigh, you'd still use a Provo airport?
Absolutely.
In the past, the, all those companies would have gone to Salt Lake City, and we're actually pulling quite a few customers away from Salt Lake City now that want to do business at a Provo airport.
So, future needs. Let's just give you an example of the numbers that we currently have, and we know more numbers than this, but this is the graph we have available right now. You can see we had no passengers, and this is when we started commercial service. Frontier Airlines, slow start, then it really took off, and then they lost their aircraft and couldn't fly it anymore. So, we had this little drop right here, and then this is where Allegiant started. And that's what our emplainments, and an emplayment is anybody who buys a ticket and gets on an airplane is an emplained passenger. So, you can see the direction that we're going. We just added a new route. I'm not sure what's going to happen with that, how much more that might add, or if that will just be part of the same market. We'll have to see. But, we do know that from this point until 2018, we're now about up here. So, we're going on the same trajectory. We're right around 100,000 emplained passengers a year right now.
You added another route, which-
Oh, yeah, they announced it today, if you didn't hear it. They've been telling us they were going to announce a new route, and the new route they announced was Tucson, Arizona. We'll see. It's, I think it's kind of experimental. It's pretty close to Mesa. I didn't think Mesa would do as well as it's doing, and Mesa is full every flight seven days a week. So, Tucson may be another one where they-
Tucson's a completely different market than Mesa.
Well, it's about an hour and a half away, but it is-
It's a completely different market.
I hope you're right, and it could be huge, and that's what we're hoping for. And Allegiant obviously knows something about that market, or they wouldn't have chosen it. So, it wasn't on my top 10 list, but it was on their top 10 list.
When did that start?
That will be starting in November.
November?
Yeah.
They can't start by September 1st?
Because that's where you're going?
That's going to be while you play.
All right.
I didn't even know.
Yeah, it's too bad, but it'll start in November. And we'll make a bigger announcement with the city later. We didn't know where they were going until, what, three days ago when I called you. And then, they told us, and so, we'll come up with some event, like we do for every new market, and introduce the community to Tucson. So, it's doing nothing but going up, and that is just with what we currently have.
Steve, markets, can we talk about that for a second?
Yeah.
I miss the Southern California market.
We still have LA.
LA, and it's only twice a week, though.
Yes. The idea, what happened with San Diego was, it was on different days of the week, and it was cannibalizing the same market. So, I know I flew it, and I flew down to LA, and I flew home from San Diego because the timing worked out. And it turns out, a lot of people were doing that. So, it was just taking away from the LA flights that they already had. So, the plan was to add additional frequency to LA and just pick up that same group. They haven't been able to add that additional frequency to LA yet, just because of routing and scheduling. So, we're still hoping that that will happen. Because those LA flights are full, I can tell you, because I flew out Friday and flew home. My days are all messed up.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
And the Bay Area was just-
It was yesterday, wasn't it?
Was it just not cutting it, or was it so competitive?
It was competitive on the return. Flying out of Provo, we were still doing really well. The problem in a big market like the Bay Area is Allegiant doesn't put as much money into advertising as, say, Alaska or Delta. They're not as well-known, so when people are looking to book travel back, they were just going to the default of Alaska and Delta, who are in a price war. So, at one point, flights from Oakland to Provo, the prices got as low as, what was it, 25 bucks? The price got as low as $25 for Allegiant to be able to compete with that marketing push, and at $25, they're not making a profit. So, they suspended that flight until that stabilizes. Every time I talk to them, that's still a market they want to go to, but they're not going to go into it while the prices are still at $25. Allegiant's not an airline that can do that. Okay, so, we've got GA and corporate growth. We need to try and accommodate both. As I've said, our primary focus is, right now, the market looks like it's going to corporate and commercial growth. So, the master plan, what we're trying to do is figure out what we want to be. This is the same question we asked in 2000. What do we want to be? What should this airport be? What do we think is coming? And we're trying to sort through that as we work through some of these figures. So, this is a picture I took today. Donovan's going to be thrilled about this picture. This is us boarding the ramp, and I just took it up close to show you that Allegiant's customer service, from our standpoint, is really these two guys, Donovan and Trent. If you get compliments about Allegiant's customer service, as far as our staff goes, it's those guys. Now, we get compliments also about, and I wasn't able to get a picture of them unfortunately, but Tac Air's group. Tac Air has an excellent group of people in there that work for Tac Air under the banner of Allegiant, helping people get ticketed, helping people move through. Allegiant is not an airline that is known for exceptional customer service, but at this airport, they are. And that is Tac Air's guys and our guys that are making that happen. And one other person that isn't here today is Susan Nelson, who does badging, but she also answers all the phones for us. She will spend 15 minutes on the phone with an Allegiant customer, trying to help them out so that they don't have to call the Allegiant customer service line and stay on hold for a half an hour. And those are the kind of things that Tac Air and Provo City are doing to help make this as successful as it is. Not to be forgotten is our police officers, who are always down there. Firemen are down there as well, but they don't interact with the public as much. So, our police officers also, excellent customer service representatives for Allegiant. But, I consider them, because people don't separate Allegiant from Provo. So, when you come in on Allegiant, it's Provo is what they're seeing. So, to have Tac Air's staff, led by Claudia, and everybody doing the work that they do, is why it's working. Our customer service is excellent. They will get moving. So, I put this picture in just to show you, this is a big storm coming in right here, and it's raining, and it's windy, and we're just walking everybody out onto the ramp as it flies and putting them on. We're doing outdoor boarding. And even if we build a new terminal, we'll have to do some outdoor boarding. Because each one of those ramps, well, a long time ago, they were $1 million each. So, that just adds a lot of cost to your terminal. We would hope to have one or two, but if we get more flights than that on the ground, we're still going to be doing some outdoor boarding. But, it can get difficult in January and February. It gets pretty cold, and we're still boarding people. We help them as much as we can to get out there quickly.
Hey, Steve, before you move that picture, I think that's a good representative view also of the ramp that's really gobbled up by the service. So, maybe speak to that as far as corporate traffic.
Yeah, pretty much from Tac Air to all available space. In fact, with these guys parked here right now, we can't bring anybody through there because we've lost so much ramp space. So, when they're on the ground, that eats up the whole ramp, which means that Tac Air, to run their business, has nowhere to put the corporate traveler that's flying in at the same time. We're having to put them somewhere else to leave this center ramp open for the commercial carrier during the times when they're here. So, our ramp space, yeah, it is, it's been eaten up badly. And luckily, like UVU has a couple of buildings with a lot of ramp space, and they're always great about just moving their aircraft so that we can use their ramp, what would be where their aircraft would be stored, to store more corporate hangars. And that's made a really big difference at the airport as well, is that everybody works together. We had to have Duncan give up some of their ramp for this construction project that we're doing. And we get almost no blowback. When we go and ask, everybody works together. And I can tell you, if, when I talk to other airport managers, that is not common, to have this much interaction and camaraderie with everybody that's down there. Okay, so, we decide what we want to be, and we have to decide if we have a choice, and this is one of the problems that we have when we do a master plan. The public gets really worried that a master plan means that's the direction we're pushing everything. Typically, when we do a master plan, what we're thinking at the airport is, what's coming? What do we know is coming, and how do we get ready for it? It's not to push that to happen. That will happen in its own due time, but we need to be ready for what's coming. Thank goodness, we had the master plan we had, or we could have a real mess at the airport now. So, it's important that we conduct these master plans with the idea with the public that this is not an absolute thing that's going to happen. Just because the last one did, that just means our forecasting was correct. We can go out and necessarily push for it to happen. When corporate aviation starts coming in, it starts coming in, they want to be here, we need to provide a space for them. So, that's why the public input is so critical, to make the choice, to make decisions on things where we do have a choice. Where can we put things? Where is a good place to recruit, and where is a good place to leave it alone? That's what the master plan is going to show us, is the places we don't have a choice. This is coming whether we like it or not, and to show us the places where we do have a choice. So, we want to plan for all possibilities, anticipate the needs, which right now, we've talked about, is basically corporate and commercial, and also keeping our minds toward our GA customers. Yeah, and we always want to be a good neighbor. During the last master plan, one of the biggest things that came out of the public input is we switched our entire pattern to a non-standard right-hand pattern. We did that because of public input, because we want to be a good neighbor. We want to be quiet. We don't want to disturb neighborhoods. We have a new high school over there that happens to be right in our flight, our final flight area for runway 1-8. If we take off 3-6, we're going out right over them, banking up at full throttle and making that turn. We want to be sensitive to that. We're still going to need to use that runway from time to time, but we want to be sensitive to the fact that we have a high school there now. So, we want to try and be good neighbors and get as much of the traffic and the noise away from the neighborhoods as we possibly can. That's the one benefit of being right next to a lake, is you have a lot of area that is not noise-sensitive, and we can try and use that to the best of our ability. So, that was it. So, if anybody has any more questions, we have the whole board here, and most of the key players from the major corporate users at the airport as well.
So, when would be the next important stage for getting public input?
Well, we have what we call, we're just calling it our little SEAL team, which is our master planning team. That's the process we go through. So, our next important stage is we meet with that group, which is just a smaller group with the city planners, the mayor, Wayne Parker, me, Dave Decker, Brian- with the city planners, the mayor, Wayne Parker, me, Dave Decker, Brian Torgerson, where we get together and take a look at where they, where they're at. And once we're at a place where we have viable options to go out with the public, then we go to public. So my guess is within the next month, two months, we're gonna start advertising for public meetings, so that we can bring people in and see what they envisioned at the airport.
Maybe this is for our economic development, what do you see happening outside of the airport master plan as far as commercial or development, or what type of things? Are you hearing anything, or are there opportunities there?
Brian's laughing, and Dave's laughing, because I feel very strongly about the Lake Shore Parkway corridor. And I'm just gonna get myself into trouble, but I'm gonna tell you anyway, because during my short time with our development department 20 years ago, and, and the market has changed, and I could be totally wrong. What we discovered was that cities make money off of freeway exits. That's where you generate sales tax revenue. That's where you generate corporate revenue. We're very limited in our freeway exits. We have two. One of them is pretty much built out, Center Street, so the only one we have to work with is University Parkway. And it, and right now, it only goes one way, and that's kind of built out, too. What we've done when we created, and this is me speaking as a citizen of Provo now, and, and a lifetime citizen of Provo, and, and an airport manager. We've created a corridor to an airport that has the possibility of creating that freeway exit at both ends. So if you consider the airport sort of like a freeway exit, people get off of the airplanes, get in their cars, and they're moving. Where are they moving? They're moving down Lake Shore Parkway. People get off of University Parkway as the west side begins to build out with high schools and, and all the development that's going down there. People are moving along that corridor. That creates a great opportunity for basically a third freeway exit that we don't currently have. And it creates a possibility for a commercial corridor. Now, private property owners are going to be able to do whatever it is that, that they decide to do within the purview of, of community development and zoning standards. But if it was me, and we had total control, which no one does, I would think that their biggest opportunity to make money is if that is a commercial corridor, at least on the frontage to that road. To put that into the hands of nonprofits or tax-exempt entities, I shouldn't start talking. Or to put housing development on that area, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. You look at Orem, where they make all their money, those long corridors of commercial activity, we have that opportunity with sort of a blank slate. So I, I think that we have a good corridor with a solid anchor on both sides. A freeway exit on one side, and a growing airport on the other side. That's a great opportunity for those property owners to maximize the value of their property. And again, just for those who panic, we love farms. Farms are great around an airport. I'm not saying that they should stop farming, but if they ever decide to stop farming and sell that, and if they do want lower density and open space, there are commercial options that would be win-wins for everybody. And I'm gonna stop talking about that now, because I-
Thanks, thank you, sir. I don't want to get too troubled.
That's okay. Any other questions?
Just, just a thought on that. You know, you seem to have a pretty clear vision of what could happen there. We have some groups working now on the west division, the west Provo. And so I know, I believe you came and spoke to one group a couple of years ago or whatever, but there's a new group that's kind of running, and it might be worth having that conversation with them.
Yeah, and, and again, I don't want to tell any private property owner what they can or cannot do with their land, but if I'm looking at it, if I owned property there, if I could buy property there, I would. And I would hold on to it while the airport develops. And I'd, I'd sell it commercially, and I'd, I'd be rich. Yep.
So I would echo that, that as we have committees and people working on the future of the west side, in order for them to understand the possibilities of what could be, whether they want to embrace it or accept it or incorporate it, but nonetheless, hearing what you have to say is essential for them to make an educated statement and plan.
I, I'm happy to come and, and speak with anybody that wants to listen to me. I can talk about the airport for hours on end and bore you all to tears. I can talk about Provo City for hours on end and bore you all to tears. So I'm happy to talk to anybody that wants to hear me.
Steve, I know, two questions. I looked at those emplainments, we're not in any danger anymore of losing a tower?
It doesn't look like it. I'm, I'm still going to the conference every year to make sure. I'm still going to a meeting with our, with our congressional representatives to make sure. Ogden is in the same situation that, that we are, but right now, it looks like we're, we're pretty good. Over 100,000 emplainments with one of the biggest flight schools in the country, and one of the most reputable aviation companies in the country, two of the most reputable aviation companies in the world. I, I don't see us being in a lot of trouble for a while, no. And as soon as I say that, something will-
You're dealing with Washington.
Exactly.
You talked about all the ramp space that we're getting now. It's a lot more than we had. How are we doing on equipment for, or plowing in the time? Are we, are you getting the support you need there?
Trent, Donovan, anybody want to weigh in on how you feel about 10 acres of plowing?
An ouch, is that what you're saying? We'll be fine in an ouch?
We'll do it, and, and we do, we have, and I didn't mention this while I was talking, we have unbelievable support from Dave Decker and Brian Torgerson. And I've already been promised that, that what we need will, will get, so.
That being said, these three, you can imagine the amount that these guys take on. I mean, Steve, Steve gives these two a lot of credit, but Steve's in it with them, and, and they're, right now, they're working around the clock, so they're getting to a point where you'll never hear them complain, Gary, but they are full-tilt, so.
We work the, we work the Monday, Thursdays, and then we trade off. Donovan takes the Friday, I take the Saturday. Trent usually picks up the Sunday, but we switch the Sundays around so that everybody doesn't have to have a Sunday. So we're all, we're all doing-
When a plane's here, somebody's there. You get one through your, wow.
Always. And anytime there's a divert, one of us is there. Anytime there's an aircraft with more than 30 passengers on it, one of us is there, the fire department has to be there.
Or a storm, or an emergency?
Or a storm, or an emergency, or a gate breaks, or somebody hits a bird, or a light goes out, and, yeah, we're on call all the time.
Eating birds, how often does that happen?
Not as often as you'd think. Actually, Trent's hit more of them in the last week than, than aircraft have, but we won't go into that. Offline, he can show you his video. Anything else?
Can you just, I know we've talked about this before, but just give real quickly timeline for terminal and necessity to talk seriously about that with the ramp, money coming from FAA?
Dave talks about that better than I do, if Dave wants to jump in. I know, we've got money coming in 2020, and so when you are, are someone like me that's always thinking about in broad terms, that seems like a long time. But as Dave points out to me, that's really now. Do you want to say anything about that?
Well, I'd just add, if, if you understand the timing for that money coming from FAA, and, you know, understanding how long it takes to get a terminal designed, you know, the financing package put together, we really need to be acting now, you know, to make decisions about a terminal. And obviously, finishing the master plan is key, so I'm, I'm being a little patient as to how we finish the master plan, but, you know, very, very quickly after the master plan, we, we need to get serious about a terminal and what it looks like and how we pay for it.
And in the meantime, I've heard you say that we, we're going to see who else is interested in Provo, but we're not pushing them.
I, I haven't been, when I go meet with airlines now, this last one, I didn't, I didn't put on a hard sell. I certainly wasn't going to say no if somebody wanted to come in, but I was definitely targeting that 2020, 2021 timeframe. Right now, to fly out of Provo, you would have to come at odd hours that aren't natural for airlines. It goes in waves, so you've got, you've got these peak hours that they want to come in. And we can only have one at a time. So yesterday, the flight I flew in on, I got off the flight, and it, the other one was just barely taxiing out when the next one was coming in. That's about as close as we can cut it, because Tac Air, who handles the, the ticketing and who goes through security, they have to keep everybody out till we empty the terminal for that flight, before we start checking people in for the next flight. So when one's landing, when one's taking off, that means we're trying to check those people in almost at the same time we're boarding the plane. And that's the situation we don't want to get into, because then we get delays, and we, we don't want to do that. So we're trying to spread it out at least two hours apart, but if you spread it out two hours apart, that makes it really hard for airlines to schedule around you. So a, a second gate is imperative, not only for getting another airline, it's imperative for Allegiant to be able to continue expanding. They, they just won't be able to do it with what we have right now. And that includes ramp space. We, we don't have anywhere to put another airplane anyway. If it comes in at the same time, it's gonna have to park on the taxiway till we move the other one out of the way.
Going back to the birds for a second, if the, if the restoration project with the Delta, you know, and, and some of that land gets changed from cattle ranches to wetlands areas, presumably, there would be an increase in the bird population, and so I'm just wondering-
How long do you have?
I mean, what do you know about-
Again, Dave and Brian are rolling their eyes again, because this is one that's gonna get me going. And we have a wetlands area that attracts birds already to the south of us, shallow water. So we're dealing with that already. So the Provo River Restoration people will tell you, well, you've already got the problem. So, so what is, why, why do you care? Well, because if you put another wetlands north of us, I'm worried about when birds start flying out of that wetlands, where are they gonna go? They're gonna head to the next one, which takes them right over the airport when aircraft are at their most vulnerable. So, yeah, we're very concerned. There needs to be some sort of mitigation. We have meetings with them constantly. Both Dave and Brian have been actively involved in our negotiations with Provo River Delta Restoration. Dave is pretty vocal about it. If you want to grab him after the meeting, he'll talk to you about it as well. We're worried about it. The flight school's worried about it. Yeah. Duncan's worried about it, Tac's worried about it. It, it's something, it's something we're looking at. It, when it gets built, we are gonna have to have a mitigating presence. And the way we mitigate is, by the old saying, if it flies, it dies at the airport. So we shoot. So we have to. That's how we get birds to leave. But if, if we've got them crossing over us, that's, that's a little tougher to mitigate. So we're looking at all those options. Did I tiptoe around that one, Marla?
Thank you very much. We're gonna, we can talk, like you said, for a long time. This is an exciting place to be here, around the airport. Appreciate all of you coming in today. And if there's anything you would like to tell us, any, you know, anytime in the future, please feel free to contact us. We'll do, we'll, we support you.
And we, we felt that support. I think you're our first council representative that's been to every single airport board meeting, so thank you. We also have an excellent airport board that understands aviation and understands Provo City's needs, and they're great to work with. They, they give great counsel when it's needed, and strong support when it's needed. So that's been awesome. We've also felt that from the administration, now through three administrations since I've been here, strong support. I think everybody understands that we have a potential diamond if we do it right, and so we want to make sure we do, yeah.
The one thing I, the one thing I would suggest for the council to keep in mind is one of the things that really helps make that airport a diamond is that mild buffer zone around it, which is industrial and farmland. If, if anyone starts approving, you know, housing, apartments, condominiums right up close to the airport, that'll kill your airport faster than anything. Because airports do make noise. As long as it's industrial and farmland, that's, that's possible.
Right. And as long as you brought that up, when we say airport protection zone, everybody, everybody thinks that means something that it doesn't. Bill's right. It, it's not restricting things to only airport-related uses for the owners down there. It is just airport-compatible uses. Things that aren't going to be impacted by a noisy airport. Things that aren't going to be impacted by stuff flying over their head all the time. And that's like farmland, commercial uses, certain commercial uses. Yeah, I, I mean, those are all, all good uses. Parks are good uses, good open space. So all those are compatible.
That was really a nice place to visit and see what goes on around that area, so.
Yeah, and Lincoln is a great example. Most of the area around the airport is an industrial park. It's warehouses and businesses and not issue.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. We'll adjourn this meeting by unanimous consent.